All right, ladies and gentlemen. The study session of August 17th, 2021 is called to order. Donna, will you do a roll call, please?
I will. Councilmember Nisco.
Here.
Mayor Dorsey.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember McAllen.
Present.
Councilmember Bo.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
All right.
And Councilmember Reese.
Right.
I move to excuse Councilmember Fees from tonight's study session.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and second to excuse Megan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right. Our first study item is the 2022 budget. Finance Director Aaron B. Miller will share some information with us.
And, oh. Great, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Deputy Mayor, council members. I'm gonna pass this to Don Quizmy, our financial specialist, to provide the information to you. And just a word of what we're gonna show. We are still so early in our budget process yet that we don't have a lot of information. So we're gonna go over the June monthly report, talk about some of the changes that are shown on there. And then Don's gonna also talk about the updated 10-year forecast that we have with some of the new information that has, that's come into us between when you had your council retreat and looked at it to now. So with that, I'll let Don come on.
Good evening, Mayor Dorsey, Deputy Mayor Peterson, and the rest of the council. This looks different than looking at the little Peter screen. I may look worse in person, but I won't be here too long. As Aaron said, that I'll be presenting, starting with the June report. So hopefully, this has been useful, these monthly reports. And one of the side benefits that I have noticed when I'm reviewing the monthly data that if I come up with questions saying, oh, is this expense supposed to be in this line item or not, then I can shoot an email over to Aaron and Terry saying, can you check on this? Is this where it was supposed to be? And we've made a couple of changes with that, so that is a helpful thing. So I think you all have the packet. So I start on the page, the first page. I'll keep looking up at the screen, but it's not gonna be up there anyway. On that first page is kind of the summary. So a couple of things that kind of pop out really right away is that we're looking, we're projected that we're gonna go over budget. But that is really connected with our COVID recovery monies, because we got our first $1.4 million now in 2021. We'll have another $1.4 million in the next year. So when you look at the expenditures at the top, it shows that we're expected to spend over $13 million on their $12 million budget. So we will be bringing the budget supplemental in the near future to increase the budget authority for general fund. So I have some notes within their, the ending fund balance estimate at this point is $6 million. So that's fairly close to what we had last year, I mean, last month. And then we have a $2.4 million reserve that we want to maintain in the general fund. So that still leaves us $3.6 million over budget at this point. And then I have a couple notes of the, the revenues, we've been doing well even without the COVID recovery money. So that has continued to be coming in very good. And then I have notes also in the expenditure overview is that COVID money, since we don't know, it hasn't been determined how it's gonna be spent yet, we're showing it as a transfer out, and we'll put that into the capital resources fund as we, as you, as the council and City Manager Knighton decide on the spending process and how that funding gets used, then at that point, we'll transfer it out to the fund that is gonna have the expenditure. And then, oh, also what the budget supplemental will bring in the near future, hopefully within a month or two, is we also want to create utility capital funds. And I believe that's been presented to the council before, so kind of like the capital project fund that we have for street funds, that we want to dedicate that money, move it into a specific fund, and then it stays there until it's expended on a capital project. So we do that for each utility fund. So if we flip to page two, the main variance that shows up on that is also still connected to that COVID recovery funds, because that comes in on our intergovernmental revenue, makes it look very impressive when we're at 375% of our budget. But that is, was unknown money when we made the budget, and it'll be, it's transferred into our capital resources to be used later, how we will spend that. So the format has stayed the same from month to month, pretty much. So that might be enough on that page. Then on the third page, when we get into expenditures, then that non-departmental line is showing when we're transferring out that $1.4 million to our capital resources fund. So, yeah, that recovery fund really is the highlight of the bigger variances on these different pages of the information. So also reflects on page five, both in revenues and expenditures. And on the page five, that we are looking at real data, I mean, through June of 1920 and '21, and then comparing it to budget. So that page, I think, is kind of a helpful thing, because that, like, the revenues were at 67.5% at 50% of the year, and our expenditures are showing at 58.1% of the, at the 50% of the year.
And we're projecting a little over $6 million in reserves in the general fund by the end of this week?
Yeah.
So like 50, almost 50% over budget?
Fifty-three.
Are we, are targets 20% with the general fund?
We, yeah, the, the target reserve is 20%. So $6 million minus 2.4, which...
So that, that 3.6, the 3, 3.5, 3.6.
Yeah.
On the first page of this, can that have a line item there that shows the reserve and then shows any fund balance of whatever it is, $3 million?
In the bottom, kind of have that kind of address, saying the required funding and balance, just reminding us that 2.4 million is that.
Where is that? Oh, okay.
Just right above the bar chart.
Yeah.
So that we have just kind of been showing on there, just to kind of remind us, because as the budget changes, that 20% amount would be different, because we'll compare it to the budget. Because, yeah, we want to have that in the back of our minds, that 2.4, we want to, that the council has decided they want to see that as reserve, so...
But the 2.4 is just the reserve, it's not the ending fund balance, correct?
Correct. Yeah, so it's, so that, that is the reserve we want to maintain. Then on page seven, the main thing that jumps out is in the transfers out in the top portion of the page, and then that's that $1.4 million showing it's transferred out to general fund. And it's, then on the bottom of that same page, capital resources fund shows the transfer in of the $1.4 million. The fund, I think, has been looking pretty good. On page eight, one notes that we had bought some parks land for, Neyland Park, land for to expand the park, and that really should be in the capital improvement fund. And the first, it was in the 2020 budget originally, and then, I'm not sure what all took place, but COVID, of course, being one of them. So that purchase happened in 2021. So that will also have to do a supplemental, saying we spent the money in 2021 versus 2020, when it didn't take place. And that's the $84,470. I think the rest, the pages are pretty close to, but they would have been higher months. Any questions on the monthly report?
Do you have any questions for Don?
No. Everything seems to be following really closely with the trend line that we started at the end of the year. There hasn't been a whole lot of deviation, a little bit, but not much. So we're continuing on that pace.
Okay.
Then if we move on to the forecast, the first page, I think, in the handles, is showing up the assumptions that we're using. And these are the same assumptions that were used at the council retreat. So it lists on our revenue and our expenditure side, what we're projecting for years going forward. One projection that we have at this point, and I guess, I don't know if our budget really is a preliminary budget, I kind of think of it as a preliminary, preliminary maybe, or, or does. Very early in the budgeting process, but within the general fund, we, at this point, we do have two positions that were increased in there. We have a code enforcement officer and an accounting assistant. And that, that may change as the budget process continues, but we have those two positions in there.
Where are we looking?
Just on the next, the handout.
Page 13 is the assumptions.
So it's like a, like a half-page, right after the 10-year, I mean, the 10-page finance report?
I got 10 pages.
Do you not have them all in there?
If I'm looking at the right thing, I have 10 pages.
Yeah, well, 10 pages of this, but is there, right after this report?
The study session packet is 17 pages, and this document is page 13.
After the 10, I have this.
You've seen page 13 for this? Right next to the TPD. I said, what's the page numbers on it?
I don't, I don't have it, so, okay.
If you go to the council packet and not the study session packet, it's in there.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, I see. Yeah, so if you...
The business meeting packet, sorry.
This was added to...
Oh, okay.
Study session, whatever the title is.
The council.
And I think some of these documents might be both, and it's supposed to be a study session, this is maybe just in the study session. Did you find the page?
I didn't download the right thing.
But the, well, the assumptions are what was used at the retreat, so... And then on the big page, that has the forecast of year by year, then we have a note at the top that the forecast assumes no new positions, or new programs begin in 2023. So I mentioned that at this point, we have two positions in for 2022. And it doesn't doubt include any, any additional general fund, like, for TBD, transportation benefit district is coming to an end, and then that's been in the street fund. But if we continue to do as many road projects as we have, we'll have to probably transfer money from the general fund in the future. And following this along in 2021, down by the bottom, we have a transfer out showing of $5.1 million. 2.9 million of that would be planned to set aside as a, for capital resources, to bring down our general fund balance, and to have it moved into the capital resources fund. And then we move over to the 2023 year, that, at that point, our expenses go above our projected revenues by $55,000. And then, as we move over to 2025, the, at that point, our expenses are even more over our revenue, but it would also bring us down below our 2.4 million, or below our 20% budget that we want to keep as a surplus, or keep as the target balance.
Just to add a little bit more information to a couple of the things that Don mentioned, the new positions, code enforcement specifically, was in response to a couple of council members' ride-alongs with our code enforcement officer, and noting the need to be able to beef that function up. And then the, completely slipped my mind.
Accounting assistant?
Yeah, the accounting assistant position for BNO purposes, to make sure that we maintain that. And then there was one other thing that you mentioned in there. It'll come to me at the best possible time, I'm sure. So, sorry, Don.
I have a question. Is that okay, or should I ask later?
Okay, no, go ahead.
That was good.
So on the 10-year forecast assumption, I think that's page 13, maybe, revenue assumptions that sales, property, non-city utilities, city utilities, property, 2.5% per year, is that selling some of our property off?
No, that's, I believe, is property taxes, and we put it at that number because we anticipate new development. So you have the 1% property tax hike plus any new development, and that's kind of the number that we're looking at. And Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong. Yeah. So the other, I did remember the other thing. The other thing was the transportation benefit district. Don mentioned that that will be ending. That program will be ending in 2026, and we've talked a little bit about that before, but we can only extend it if there is debt associated with it. Probably not something that we want to do, we can certainly talk about it. But that's going to cause a, about a $650,000 per year reduction in our ability to do road projects. Not for several years, not for five, obviously, but something we need to be thinking about now, how we're going to address that issue, so that when the time comes, it's not, the impact is not as huge.
Then we can talk to our delegation about, about changing that law, so we can run that again?
Yeah, we can, there are several options, and I can discuss each of those with you, just to kind of see where the council is at the moment. There, there are several different ways to do it, to address it. Each involves trade-offs, so we can go through that. Like I said, we have five years, but it's definitely something we should start thinking about now, so it doesn't catch us unaware in 2026.
So when you say if there's, it can be extended if there's debt attached to it, what, what is the debt? What would that example be?
So we would issue bonds based on the revenue that is associated with it to, associated with the TBD, to complete a major road upgrade, or something like that. The danger in that is, if you issue debt, you can extend it, but it still has to go out to the vote of the people, again. So if you issue debt and it is not approved by the citizens, then you're in real trouble. So that's just one of the variables that, that we can talk through as we get closer to 2026.
I think I had asked you if it's a possibility for the citizens to buy bond, do bonds through the city. Is that a possibility? If, when you put bonds out there for projects? I don't know exactly how that works.
If we were to bond for something, for the issue bonds, it does allow for residents or citizens to purchase those bonds through secondary markets.
Okay.
So they could purchase City of Shelton bonds.
All right.
But it would be the city that would initiate that bond sale.
Okay. All right.
One more quick one. This 2.5% property tax growth, is, and is that assuming that we actually adopt the ad lorem?
Yes.
Okay.
So would that have to, that extension on that TBD, the transportation benefit district, does it have to go through the state?
Uh...
Want to get, if we want to get that changed over to where we can extend it without hooking debt onto it?
I am not sure of the exact mechanism. For the reasons I mentioned, that's not something that I would recommend.
Okay.
But there are other methods. Many cities in the state issue car tabs, basically. There's a surcharge on your car tabs, which is a replacement for the sales tax TBD. There are benefits and downsides to that approach as well. So, you know, there's many, many variables that go into it. One of those is, everybody pays sales tax whether you're here or not, whether you live here or not, but only the citizens of Shelton pay the vehicle tabs. Yeah, but that's just one of many different variables that go into that discussion. But we can, we can definitely have that discussion as the time gets closer.
The other thing to keep in mind in probably the next five years, hopefully four years, whatever, there'll actually be a new transportation revenue package in the legislature, and it, to Councilmember Nisco's point, getting that on Troy's radar, you know, as we're approaching sunsetting of the TBD, to whatever we can do to help motivate a revenue, new revenue from transportation projects. And local jurisdictions did pretty well back when the gas taxes and things were increased and, you know, but, yeah, it's obviously not enough, so...
Sorry, I didn't mean to take us down a rabbit hole there, but...
Well, that's good to have discussion always.
Yeah.
One other line that we have on here that needs mentioning is, on the bottom of the expense area, we have a guess of a 1% underspend, because traditionally, fairly often, we have a little underspending, so we're doing a negative against the expenses. So if we truly do underspend, then that extends how long we stay before we'd start dipping before billware recommended fund balance. I think that's the notes I was wanting to cover on that. Any further questions on forecasts? And then hopefully, the next sheet in the, on the packet is just the budget calendar that we, I think you probably saw that at the retreat, so it's just, may be the same as that was, but then just to, reminders that we're currently in the middle of August, that we've been meeting with departments and with the City Manager Knighton, and going through all the, all the budget requests that have come in, so that we can start sorting through those to see where, how many we have, and then we'll have to find out more what our fund balance is going into that. On September 28th, there'll be a second study session like we have now, and October 5th is our plan for proposing the budget to council.
The next study session will be in the format we talked about, where it's the off Tuesday, off council meeting Tuesday. So we just wanted to provide you this update tonight, get any direction from you on where we're heading at the moment. I know there's not a whole lot of information. Like Don said, it's a preliminary, preliminary budget. So we're getting started and going through the requests at this point from each of the departments on what, what they need to operate and to accomplish council strategic goals, as well as the yearly work plan. So if there's any questions or any comments about where we're headed so far, we'd love to hear those.
I have a question, none more. I was at a retreat, so on September 2nd, what is court of last resort if needed?
That's when, when I tell one of the department heads, no, they can come ask me to reconsider, and I can tell them no again.
Okay. I like that.
Yeah.
It's the last double.
You're right.
So at the retreat, we talked about making some potential strategic investments with the, with the underrun, or I shouldn't say underrun, with the, with the, with the growth in the general fund revenues. It sounded like we were all kind of leaning the same way towards some of the infrastructure projects, where we've had strong commercial and/or industrial interest. Just curious, has anybody been thinking about it, or any other thoughts on that, or? So, and I'm not sure, Kathy, so I'm not sure if you're in the loop on that, but we had talked about, there's certain areas where the city doesn't have sewer and water surfaces, and there's been considerable interest from business to potentially build, however not having close access to those utilities is cost prohibitive in their, in their process. So obviously, with the $2 to $2.5 million potential, you probably can't fund everything that we would want, but I think when we're talking about, again, sunsetting, you know, the transportation benefit district in five years or so, motivating some of that new commercial development or industrial may help lessen that burden if that falls off the map all of a sudden one, one year here. But, I mean, I'm still, I'm still in the, I personally am still in the, in the camp that whatever, whatever we can do out towards Johns Prairie in the UGA, and then out towards the port and Highway 101, 102, would be, I think, beneficial, just, again, based on some of the inquiries to the EDC about looking for properties to come and build new facilities and bring jobs and other things like that.
So we have our study session scheduled. That is one of the items that we're gonna bring, what we heard from council members about priorities, police cars, you know, all those types of things that were possibilities that were discussed. We'll bring those back in a study session, just to make sure that we heard you correctly and that we're moving in the right direction with those ARPA dollars. And then it will have to come back for a regular public meeting. And that, more than likely, for the capital purchases this year, will be part of the supplemental. But the direction on infrastructure projects will be prioritized through that work session and then through a public hearing specifically on those dollars. That public hearing will probably be next year. But we have six years, six years to spend, all of the American Recovery Plan Act dollars.
So getting, getting back to infrastructure and whatever, out Lake Boulevard, you know, and they did all that new road. They didn't account for a sewer line for when those people, is there water line in there, but there's no sewer line, right?
There's sewer and water there, but what happened is, is the, there was the perceived five-year no cut, so you couldn't tap into them, was the problem.
Okay, but the sewer line is in there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And water.
So the five year is coming up pretty soon, isn't it?
Well, and the five years is being interpreted a little bit differently. It's not you can't ever cut, it's when you do cut, there's, you have to patch it a little bit better than you would otherwise.
Okay.
But it, but it was, but it was put out as a no cut for years and years and years. So there's a lot of confusion still on it, because I still talk with people that say there is an absolute no cut.
Sure.
Yeah, I, just, the reason I'm talking about this, I had someone approach me on that, and I said, well, I'll find out, but, okay.
I wanted to answer Joe's question. Yes, I've definitely been thinking about that stuff, so I'm very excited, I can't wait to get into it.
Yeah.
Good deal. Anything else? Thanks, Don.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron. Appreciate it.
Good job, Aaron.
You look good over there, dude.
It's hard for him not to talk.
All right, our next item is paving of the median islands on Olympic Highway North. Public Works Technician Jared Wielander is with us. Give us some details.
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor Dorsey.
Let's write that down, yeah.
Hey, did someone get in those medians and pull some of the weeds out? I think we're just about to hear about that. Anyway, so, yeah.
Okay, Jared, go ahead, yeah.
So the Olympic Highway North median islands have been a time-consuming maintenance issue. The two-inch minus-wash rock was placed in the islands, a part of the downtown connector project. The landscape rock has provided a bedding ground for weeds, and also fall, the rock falls into the roadway, posing traffic safety issues. City crews continue spending time street sweeping the uncontained rock, spraying and manually removing the weeds on a consistent basis. Not only do these duties consume maintenance hours, but they also pose traffic safety issues to city crews while removing the rock and weeds in the median areas. Below, you can see four pictures of what the islands are looking like right now. And as you can tell, these, the rock continues to fall into the roadway, and weeds continue to sprout up.
I think they have helped fall into the roadway. I've stopped and picked up several big rocks in the middle of the road, through the mornings.
Yeah, and so the recommended long-term solution for the median locations would be to remove the rock and replace them with stamped concrete. Replacing the rock with concrete will lower worker and automobile traffic safety issues, and also reduce maintenance, maintenance hours in these areas. This will allow city crews more time spent in other projects around the city. The preferred concrete design, right now, there is existing redstone, red stamped concrete on the ends of the medians, and what we're wanting to do is install dark gray concrete in the median with a rough rock texture. concrete in the median with a rough rock texture. So below, there's some example islands that show them filled in. It's not exactly what we're proposing to do, but it's just some examples to give you guys a picture.
Would that be a pervious?
Um, I'm not.
No, not, not for this. That was one of the questions that, that Jay and I talked about was, is the island or was the island designed to treat stormwater off Olympic Highway North? And it was not. So if we cover, if we do lay the stamped concrete down, as, you know, council's going to discuss tonight, it wouldn't cause any further stormwater issues. Also, keep in mind, we're only talking about the median and not necessarily that area directly adjacent to the path on the, what's that, southwest, southeast side of, of the roadway.
I do imagine it catches a lot of water, though.
Yeah, well, the one on the southeast side, if I recall correctly, was designed for stormwater, but the center sections were not.
Because the southwest one is kind of tied into the library.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I absolutely support this. I think it's the right answer, since you're, so are we, are we spraying weeds in the city now?
There, quite a bit of it is hand-done, along with another product that Jay has found that works almost as well as the commercially available roundup stuff.
Yeah, the other, so absolutely, I think this is the right answer. I think it's, as well as limiting staff exposure to traffic is a great call. And, yeah, I think you did the homework on this, this is the right call. The other thing I've noticed a lot, too, is at the face of the curb in areas around the city, as well as sidewalks, you've got like waist-high weeds in places, and I know that that'll deteriorate curb condition and cause other issues. So if we could consider some sort of mitigation for weeds in the future on, you know, our rights of way, I think it would be a good call. And again, if there's environmentally friendly ways of doing that, that don't involve having, to necessarily have somebody out there with a, with a scraper, you know, all day long on that, I think it'd be good to explore other options for mitigating that, but, yeah, I think it's a good call.
One question, one item for consideration. So question being, is there any concern that evening that out and having it flush with the curbing becomes any issue for driving? Because if I recall correctly, one of the reasons they chose that rock was that if a vehicle did jump that curb, their tire would get stuck, instead of them continuing to travel across that and into the other lane of traffic. So do we have any safety concerns about moving forward with that? Would be the question. Second is, as we're trying to create kind of a cohesive look throughout the city, I would encourage us to stick with, if we're doing the red concrete already, let's do the red concrete already. We've got the clock tower, and now the roundabout, and a few other places. So again, trying to be consistent about our, our treatments as we're moving throughout. But I love the idea of doing something simple, easy to maintain, and effective.
Okay. We'll look into those and get you, get you answers.
I had the same question, because I've seen three vehicles washed out on that, and it absolutely works, it's like a runaway truck stop. They, they didn't pass the median. I mean, I don't know if it's enough to worry, there, there never was a median there, and it wasn't like it was a high crash area before, but I thought, I thought it was built to be that way as well.
Okay.
I think there should be a painting, a 3D painting that looks like it's going down in a hole.
I've seen those, yeah.
Yeah, as much as I like the dark look, I think we should, I agree with Diedru, I think we should keep it the red color. It looks like it's a stamped, what is it stamped, like a brick?
Yeah, stamped, like brick texture.
Yeah. I like that.
I love, I like the cobblestone look, but.
Agreed.
I think we should keep it red, and it's, the fact that it's going to be so much less maintenance and safer for the employees to not have to be out there fixing the rocks or pulling the weeds or, and worry about getting run over is a big benefit.
Okay.
Is it taffy-looking or not a good idea to have some sort of, you know, the wire barriers in the middle? That's not good-looking, that would prevent a car from at least somewhat going over to the other lane.
I think part of the concern why that wasn't done is per ASHTO standards, which kind of control all the, it's a uniform code for traffic safety throughout the United States. We can take a look at that, or potentially some other types of treatments to make sure cars don't go through into the other lane. We can definitely take a look at that. I appreciate those comments, and when we bring this back to you for consideration in a public meeting, we'll definitely have answers to those questions for you.
Jeff, I did have one more thing that I just remembered. I would suggest, and I, because I haven't heard the, how the conversation turned out between Jay and the resident up there, where they have a hard time turning into their driveway.
Yes.
That before we pour this concrete, that we determine whether we need to shorten that island a little bit, or how, I don't, I don't know how that conversation came out, so that's why I'm throwing it out there.
Yep, we will definitely look into that, too.
Because we don't want to tear it up again if we have to tear it up.
Right.
Part of it.
Do it right the first time, yep.
Okay.
Anything else?
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Jared.
Thanks, Jared.
Thank you, good.
So just real quickly, before we close this and have a few minutes before the regular council meeting starts, on your study session agenda, it's part of your, it's, Donna made this part of your looking ahead, so one convenient spot to find everything. On the 24th, which is next Tuesday, away from today, we'll be starting at 6 o'clock, and you'll have updates on the Western Gateway Project and an update on our parking lot across the street, our gravel lot, and get that, get that moving. So those are the two items. And then on September 14th, which is four Tuesdays from now, whatever it is, we'll talk about the Local Road Safety Plan, which is a pretty big deal as far as state funding's concerned and things like that. So that's what we have so far. If you have any suggestions of things that you would like to discuss in a study session, please let me know, we'll get it added, and we'll continue to bring you information as we get it.
All right.
That's all I, all I have at the moment.
What? All right. And council have any other items for discussion tonight? If not, the study session is adjourned at 5:39.